Welcome, everybody. This is the Maynard Zoning Board of Appeals. And it is seven oh two P M on, what is today, twenty third of January?
Yes.
And we're meeting via Zoom. And we have on our agenda approval of minutes. And so did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments, corrections, or edits? Then we need, we need somebody to make a motion to accept them or approve them. Leslie is doing that. Good. So Leslie approves them or makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
John seconds. So all in favor? Looks like everybody is in favor. So that means the minutes are approved as written. Very good job, guys. We have a public hearing, which is a continuation from the zoning board meeting of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. It's a special permit application filed by Justin King of eighteen Garfield Ave, Maynard. He resides at the subject property, a single-family dwelling in an S one residential district and per main, per major town bylaws, section three, two, five, the petitioners requesting a special permit for a trade shop used to operate a small engine repair business at his residence. And the way we left it last time, there were some condition challenges. And we asked Justin to come up with some suggestions as to how to mitigate some of those issues. So, Justin, you have any suggestions or thoughts that we should consider?
So I'm gonna hold on. Let me give you permission to unmute. There you go.
All right. Well, I mean, I guess the, you know, I was pretty stressed out the past month about getting some gates put in. And something I want to do anyhow. And I did some pricing on that. We're looking at about, you know, two thousand dollars in materials have something, you know, that would swing and be durable and look halfway decent. So definitely something I'm doing. So that's going to be one thing, and that's something I want anyhow. I did try to get the fire chief up here. I spoke to him on the phone. We talked for a bit about, you know, chemicals, waste oil, things of that nature. And him and I can't, you know, he made some suggestions. He was supposed to come up here, meet with me. He did not end up doing that. And then he was supposed to come again today and did not end up doing that. So but where it was left with him is that we're gonna switch over to some thirty-gallon containers. And that that underneath it also has to be sealed, which is something I was kind of aware of anyhow. And and we can certainly do that. And honestly, it'd be easier for me anyhow that way.
So so let me just pause you for a moment. I'm sort of losing track of what you're talking about. That's thirty gallons for the waste materials?
Yeah, for the waste material, and I could put that in a thirty-gallon container. And, you know, and outside. And but just underneath, it needs to be sealed in as well. So if that container were to spring a leak, and it also needs to be able to hold thirty gallons. You know, these are all things that I was aware of. Anyway, I I've dealt with this before in, you know, past job places and whatnot. And that's just kind of the protocol for it. So so we'll make that happen. You know, beyond that, I really haven't heard any other, you know, real complaints that we need to deal with other than people turning around in the road. And I do everything in my power to handle that one. You know, and that's phone calls. I tell them it's in an email. You know, I've, I've, I've copy and pasted maps and, you know, with a little doodle on it as to where to turn around, and they still think it's okay to turn around in the road. So I can change a lot of things, or I try to, but I just can't change some things. And and I I tell you, I'm I'm pretty quick to throw somebody out to that, uh, you know, can't follow some of these directions because this kind of means me being able to do what I'm doing. So if they can't follow directions, then they don't need to come here. It is kind of what it boils down to. As far as that comes.
One of the things that the fire chief was concerned about was flammable materials, your gasoline. How much gasoline do you store? And I had seen in one email, it was like ten gallons. Is that true?
Yes. Now, that's ten gallons. So that's one five-gallon container. And then I have two separate mix containers that I use for different types of mixed fuel. Yeah, so at the very most, we have ten gallons. But, you know, right now I have less than a gallon here myself. You know, it's time to go refill that. So it goes up to ten gallons, diminishes off. And then we also talked about chemicals as far as spray paints, carburetor cleaner, brake cleaner, things like that. These are all things that I have had here. And I would have regardless. You know, because I take care of my own things, property, house, equipment, whatever. And there's some, you know, chemicals involved in that. So I would have all of these things anyhow. The only difference that has changed about me having, you know, a little repair shop here is the frequency at which I go through them. Space is a big issue for me here. Anyways, I'm, it's a problem for me, let alone anybody else. So, you know, I don't stock a lot of this stuff. I I can't. So it's it's no different whether I have a shop here or I don't have a shop. It's just the rate at which I go through them. So, you know, if I want to burn through, you know, ten cans of carb clean, then that's kind of on me. But we don't keep ten cans of carb clean here.
So Julia, could you put up the, the list of things that we need to consider? For a special permit?
Sorry. So let me go to all sections.
It's it's in the staff report. It's easy. It's all in the staff report on board docs of Caesar Julia.
What's what's section is that? It's four point. I just have the bylaws up right now. So first ten point four, right?
Yeah.
I had it up, and then I started looking at other stuff. And now, okay, so let me screen share. Okay, so here. Conditions. Oh, sorry, this section criteria.
Yeah. And the these are the things that we are to consider when we're putting on a special permit or approving a special permit. And traffic flow, including parking and loading, to me is an issue. You know, and you made some comments to that, Justin.
Yeah.
Neighborhood character and social structure. And the impact on the natural environment. Those are the three that I I think as as we make our findings, we need to be quite clear as to what it is. You know, your fence talks a little bit to the the neighborhood character in in managing your waste and having the basin underneath your waste can is is dealing with the impacts on the natural environment. And and your traffic flow. Well, you're on a dead-end street, so you got a challenge there.
Right. You know, and I'm just a one-person show anyhow, you know, I I can't handle so many anyhow. So, you know, I I I space these people out. I've never once, and it never gets to that amount of volume anyways. I've never told anybody, no. You know, so we don't even get to that volume where where I can't even handle it. So when they drop off, you know, it's an extra car that day. Every so often, you know, we might get two or three in a day, and then I don't see any for, you know, four, five, six days.
Okay, so on on the the fire chief's comments, we had asked him, both Bill and I, you know, had some emails back and forth trying to understand the rules here. And there might be need for a permit. Did the fire chief talk at all about getting a permit to store the hazardous, the flammable material, the gasolines?
He he did. He did bring up something about a permit. And again, I thought he was going to come up here. He was gonna come up here. I don't even know what day it was. I don't. He was gonna come up here Thursday or Friday, I think. And he said he couldn't find my house, so I found that kind of amusing, I guess. And then he said that, you know, I spoke to him on the phone, and then he was gonna come up here this past Monday, yeah, today. And that never happened either.
Okay. The other thing that 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 I was concerned about and did a little work on is the amount of hazardous or hazards, the waste material that you have. And I don't know, Julia, do you have any further information on that? Because the D E P has some permit requirements, too.
Yes, so I don't have like exactly what permits he would need from D E P to store that, just because I'm not sure if he's hitting that threshold. Paige, you might be able to help me out here, since you might have a little bit more information on that with your your day job.
I wish I could be more helpful. So I'm with the Environmental Policy Act Office, not not D E P, but I do know that there the Office of Toxic or there's the O T A Office, which regulates this. And depending on how much you generate, you need to qualify as like a very small generator. And there's all these different reporting criteria associated with it.
Yeah, so I was I was taking a look at three ten C M R thirty, which this that's what's pulled up right now, which is a very large document. So we won't go through that right now, but you know, because that's just a state process, you know, it's not something I I know.
So can you let me do a screen share here, Julia?
Of course.
Because I think I might have the document you're interested in, but I don't know how to do that. So where do I find screen share?
So on the bottom, it says share screen.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
And then you just want to choose, it's gonna allow you to choose a window. So choose the window that you want to that you want to show.
I think this is the one I want. And then I say share. And what happened? Did anything happen?
Yeah.
There you go.
There we go. This is, this is the very small quantity generator of hazardous waste from from the D E P website. And they talk about cleaning solvents, oils, inks, paints, whatever. And they're ignitable. They can catch fire. They're corrosive, reactive, toxic, and so on. And and they give you all these criteria here. And and then they say never accumulate more than twenty-two hundred pounds or two hundred and seventy gallons. Well, that's you're way below that, Justin. But then they say, as and when you register it, thermal treatment such as incineration or vaporization is not allowed. Whoa, you said you give this to somebody to burn. So I don't know. I mean, this is just what I found on their website.
Oh, Justin, I'm sorry, one, one second. You're just muted. So let all finish.
So this is just something to be aware of. And and I don't know, I mean, you know, we have other folks here, maybe Julie or Paige could could help you out more, but that's a lot of waste if you're talking thirty gallons now.
Paul, would you like him to be unmuted? You have to let me know.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, Justin.
You should be able to unmute now, Justin.
Let's, I mean, a small engine holds twenty ounces of oil on average. You know, we're not getting you know, thirty gallons of waste oil, you know, that that might happen twice over a course of a year. So I I mean, I'm looking at the numbers here. You know, I I don't know. I'm not seeing an issue.
Well, yeah, but the point here is just it says here, you know, you may register with D E P as a very small generator, and then you can say what you can do. I don't know where their low threshold is, whether you are or not.
All right, well, maybe this, but I will register with whoever I want and get whatever permits that I need to. So whatever it is, I'll do it. So let's just kind of figure out what these things are.
Yeah, and that's my point. And and the area is the, you know, the the fire chief with the flammables and and then this waste are the things that struck me is, you know, we all worry about.
So I spoke with the fire chief. He never showed up here. Everything on paper, I'm under. And and the fire chief, you know, he he didn't seem too too concerned. He had some questions for me. We gave him some answers and, you know. So where's the issue?
So just if I can for the board, Mr. Chair, the fire chief did not make it this morning, as he as he said to justice, we did send some remarks that that the board has been forwarded. Mr. Chair, would I in the case of like something like the D E P, where the applicant is, you know, he's limited to thirty thirty-gallon tank in this case. Would it suffice if we added a condition that said applicant shell is responsible for conforming with D E P statutes with disposal or that sort of thing that that because we don't, as we know, the board has authority to oversee this in general terms. But in the in the case of of, you know, D E P regulation, I think that caveat would be the way to deal with any hazardous waste or disposal.
That's probably the best way to go. I mean, if you look at our criteria and and Julia, if you could pop that thing back on the screen, the list of things that we need to consider.
And that, right, that way the applicant's on notice. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah.
So you would like me to bring it back up? Are we, are you starting deliberation? Are you gonna or keeping the public hearing open?
Well, the public hearing's still open, yes. So it's those those six items that we are dealing with. And I pointed out that there's three of them there that need to be considered. And and Bill's comment about noting the issues that we're worried about, the flammability and the that's the safety issue. And natural environment, that's the waste collection. Yeah, we'll put that on as some of our findings that they need to be complied with through the appropriate agencies and so forth. I think I think that's what I'm hearing. So Justin, do you have anything else to add from your thoughts on on how to mitigate any of these issues?
At this point, I, you know, tell me what to do, and I'll do it.
Okay.
May I, may I jump in, Mr. Chair?
Sure, you can jump. You can walk.
I can do them both. Well, not very well today. Justin, you'd said that it for in the mix fuel, you had like a maximum of ten gallons and a maximum five gallons of typical gas or fuel on hand. So would, and I'm not, I can't speak for the board, but I would suggest, would that be something if the board was to make that a condition? And that the containers and the storage was to be consistent with all town fire permitting requirements. And that way, it's on, again, it's up to you to be consistent with the the fire chief to get his permit in this case. But the board has a security of understanding these are the limitations of the flammable liquids that would be on on site. Is that reasonable?
That's that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, does any board member have questions of Justin?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Leslie.
I'm always concerned about noise, and I know that the town doesn't have regulations about it beyond the state level. But I'm wondering, you said that you run your machines for fifteen minutes after you repair them to make sure that they're that they are actually fully repaired. Do they all have to be run for fifteen minutes or just some of them? Is there any way down to ten minutes or?
It's fifteen minutes. And and I say fifteen minutes. Quite often, they're not. It's it's not fifteen minutes because, you know, some machines are newer. We we know they're gonna be okay, but we still test run them. You know, I I've learned in doing things that that I say things are bigger and longer. So if I think it's gonna take two days, I tell them five days. You know, so these runtimes generally aren't fifteen minutes long. You know, and 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 nothing for nothing, nobody had any complaints when I just ran up and down the street with my snowblow for for an hour.
I know, I know, I
You know what I mean?
Believe me, what you do is a lot less annoying than I have to put up with from my neighbors.
Justin, excuse me, how often do you start, like when we're talking about fifteen minutes running a motor to test them? How often does it happen today? Probably average?
Well, I mean, if I'm only doing one repair a day, which which, you know, it doesn't really equal out that way. Yeah, we're talking one a day. If if we have some sort of a carburetor issue or something, you know, that same machine may get run for five minutes, then we adjust something. Then it gets run for another five minutes. And again, you know, I'm not doing this at seven in the morning, eight in the morning, nine in the morning, ten. You know, I I pick around the afternoon. I pick in the later afternoon. It's winter time. People have got the doors shut, the windows shut. You know, and 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 I'm not over here, you know. To be quite honest, I get anxiety starting up things because I know people don't like it. You know, I'm not over here building hot rods and and making a ton of noise for no one reason, you know. And 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 I wish I could show the stress that I have when I do start up something because I know, you know, I know the neighbors are hearing it. So we don't, we we tone this stuff down. Yeah, it's just.
So would it be, I'm sorry.
So, Justin, as as you worry about starting these things up, would you accept a particular window of time to be to do that so that you're not going to surprise a neighbor by, you know, waking him up if he's a late sleeper kind of stuff?
That's fine. I think as of right now, I have one, and it's between ten and four. In the summertime, that might be a little later, you know, the neighbor's out mowing his lawn at that time, too.
Okay.
Now, it's just I kind of think, you know, maybe it just comes easy to me. I'm not gonna start up something at seven in the morning. I mean, that just kind of seems like a norm. So if it needs to be put on paper or something, if that's what we're getting at, then yes, it'll be it. Whatever they are, I'm sure I'm within them.
All right, well, that you you read my mind because as we put this special permit together, we will want to have criteria that are documentable.
Yes, yeah, and I guess I guess that's the part that I'm missing. That's fine. Yes, but that's, you know, let's let's do all that.
So
that happened.
Great. Any any other questions of Justin from board members?
I have one question.
Sure.
Just to sort of summarize what you're talking about, would there be a time where you might get to three different machines where you would want to run them for fifteen minutes? So maybe throughout the day, you might have up to three fifteen-minute blocks? Or is that, is that like the high end?
If if that day happens, I made good money that day. That doesn't happen very often.
But but it but it does. So I guess I want to find out is what's what's the most that you you would do?
I would say that maybe happened once this year. I wish it happened more, but it doesn't work out that way. Yeah.
That's part of the criteria that we're looking at. We're trying to work with you on that.
Right, right. I mean, if we're firing up three different machines in a day, I I mean, I I can go, I can take all my money and go get a shop downtown somewhere when that starts happening. But that's just not the way it works right now. So we're just, we're not anywhere near that kind of volume that we're running three machines. Has it happened? It probably happened once or twice this past year.
Right, Justin, it's probably my fault. I didn't explain what what the board is doing at this point, and I should have done this before. What they're trying to do is with every permit, with a special permit, they have conditions of approval that establish what the board has decided tonight. And and what we're trying to do is give them a general comfort level. So in Brad's case, like what Brad is saying is, you know, what would be the maximum that, you know, you would be able, that you would feel is likely a number of times you're gonna start up a motor, and then the board would theoretically craft something that says, okay, no more than this. And no more than X amount of gallons of waste. See, that's kind of what we're doing. I should have done a better job with that. I I apologize.
Yeah, yeah. And and yes, now, you know, now that I see all that, yes. So, yeah, if you want to put a number on it of a maximum three in a day, then I, that's fine with me, and I hope we could do that.
Okay, any other questions from board members?
I have just one more.
Sure, go ahead, Brad.
Okay, it's about the about the traffic. When you put up a fence, are you going to have enough room for someone to pull into your driveway and then and then get out? And especially if they drop something off of the trailer, they're gonna be able to back in with the trailer? Because I think the neighbors would be very upset to have to use their driveways for your business, for your clients to turn around in.
If they use my neighbor's driveway, they're not gonna stay here. I've been making that pretty clear with people, and and it's it's pretty frustrating with me. So that's 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 for one. I I I'm pretty much waiting to throw somebody out because of it. So it's just not gonna happen. Oh, yeah. I would like to think it's not going to happen. But as far as the fence goes, so now the fence, my, the house is whatever, we'll call it twenty feet off the road. And, you know, and there's a little driveway in front of the house. I would put the gate back twenty feet down the driveway from the house over to the bushes. And that leaves me twenty feet of driveway up front, plus the gates I put in. I want dual swinging that could swing both ways, or at least, you know, inwards. You know, so that we can move things around. And then, you know, and end of the day, whatever, during the day, when we don't need to go in and out, gates can be shut. And, you know, I I want them to be durable because I will be opening and closing them often. And I want them to look good, you know.
All right, thank you.
So on this gate thing, Justin, is there gonna be a fence along the property line, or is it just the gate on the driveway?
Paul, if you want to kick in the money, I'll fence it off the whole driveway, eight feet high, and then throw a tarp over the house. Now, I would love to put a nice fence up along the whole driveway. I made thirty thousand dollars last year. That's what went into my pocket, and a lot of it's hanging off the wall above me. Yeah. I'm not making the money to do that. The house blocks off one side. The bushes block off this side. And then the gate would kind of block off the whole front minus the far side of the house, and that's just my backyard.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the the vision visibility concept from the street. The gate doesn't most of that, but I don't remember what's on the side of the driveway.
The how the house in the bushes.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we put a gate in the driveway, basically, you're not gonna see, you know, anything as far as any machines go or you know, anything like that, you're gonna see just a small portion down the side and down into the backyard.
Okay. Any any other questions from board members, please?
Justin, this is Paige from the Z B A. I just had a question when you're doing that testing. I think one of the comments we heard earlier was there was a comment regarding potential fumes. Does the equipment run testing occur in the driveway, or does that occur sort of behind your house? Is there a part of your yard that's farther from other neighbors?
This is a small engine we're starting up. Your car's put out quite a bit, you know, of stuff and fumes. I just, I I I don't know what you want me to do on that one.
Oh, no, I'm just, I'm just asking.
I mow my lawn every week as well, sometimes two times a week. You know what I mean?
I I think what I think, Justin, would you think that the, I mean, when you do it, I I I think what I think, Justin, would you think that the, I mean, when you do it, it? When you start the engine, where do you typically start it, though?
In 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 the driveway, I I I'm guess what I'm what I'm getting at is what's? I don't know, I in the driveway.
All right, I've been asking a lot of questions, do we have anything else from the board members before we begin our deliberation? I see we have another person online here, Donna, do you have any questions, comments? Got an unmute to do that.
Hi, yeah, thanks for acknowledging me, no, thank you, I'm I'm just listening, I'm I'm in support of of other, you know. Home occupations in the community, um I'm just listening, thank you for um recognizing me.
All right. So, um are we going to go into deliberation now, is that agreeable, do you think, everybody? I hear, I see a bunch of nods, I can't hear the nods, everybody's on mute. So.
We should close a public hearing, then, Mr. Chair.
It's good, so he says we need to have a a motion, do we have said motion?
Make them.
Yeah, Leslie does the motion, okay, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, one of you guys seconded. So all in favor, all right, so now we're now we're going to deliberate. The the challenge that that I see in this one is the definition of a trade shop. And our permit issue for a trade shop is a building. And that that's what I'm struggling with, is how do we rationalize where he actually, you know, does the repair? Versus his assembly area out in the driveway. And the the fence might mitigate that, but the trade shop permit is for. Use in a building. So if you guys wanted to comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Would you like me to pull up that definition, Paul?
Yes, please.
Well, I've got a, I've got something I'd ask while we're wa- waiting to pull up about the definition. And and I I know the definition you're talking about, Paul, um I think in that same. In that same vein, though, when we look at it, uh one of the examples, for example, is a plumber. Now, it it it, you know, and it calls out, I think, a plumber, oh, here it is, yeah. Typically, like in that case, a plumber and probably a mason. You know, it may be leaving. The premises to conduct the trade, they're storing everything at their.
Right, and basically the trade shop in that those cases, and you picked some good ones to talk about. Are where he stores his materials inside that building. And, you know, he's a building in connection with his trade.
Well, with it with, you know, with the work, would I would think where the 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 trade would take place. Well, some of it, in the case of like a tinsmith. The upholster probably, but I I'll let others talk, I was just curious, I was just thinking about that.
I don't see anything in there that says specifically it's a building only, it the it talks about the premises. And it talks about.
In connection with its trade.
So if you can consider the driveway part of the premises.
I think, but it doesn't say that, it says use the home or building thereon. And that that that's where I'm struggling with it, and that's that's one reason why we're trying to rewrite the rules, right, right, Brandon? To clean this up a little bit, but what we're dealing with right now is this is the definition, this is what he's applying for as a special permit.
It but it it's in connection still with the trade, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, that that would be, I I I see what you're saying, that that would be my comfort level on that.
Right, but we we need, you know, all respect, Bill, I I'd like to get the feedback from the the board members here. Because they're the ones that are gonna be committing their signature to this.
Of of course, I apologize.
Jerry, you need to deal that mute button.
Yeah, I guess, so I I guess one of the things that I'm thinking, looking at the definition of a trade shop. One thing passes my mind is, does he even need a special permit? I mean, he's got the shop, but he does all, there's a work outside, the testing outside. To your point, Paul. He he's not working in the shop per se. So I'm not sure what restrictions we can really put, we've already put them for amount of, you know, waste oil and. Things of that nature, gasoline, flammables, that's all dealing with the shop, but the work predominantly appears to be done outdoors.
He said, he said, he's doing some work in his basement, that's where he does the actual. Cleaning up and repairing and whatever needs to be done, reassembling.
Okay.
Right, I wouldn't think that he would be uh tinkering around with. Removable, you know, parts that he can take inside and work on. In the warmth of his basement, and I certainly consider my driveway part of my home.
So you want to include uh the property?
I believe that a that a home is not just the the building, but but your property as well.
I I have a question or a comment, if I could. So a a carpenter, a mason, a painter, all these people uh presumably have a vehicle. And they probably park their vehicle in the driveway, so from their building that they're using, they're using. They're loading it into their, you know, probably into their truck, and then they're driving their truck. So they're not using, they're using more than just the building. Also using their driveway and their premises part of their part of their business, or as part of their trade job.
Well, you had to load up their vehicle and go somewhere. Yeah, but that's that's not actually working on the driveway, and this fellow here would be working on the driveway, taking the the fuels out of his machine. And then re- reassembling the fuels, testing it, test it in the driveway and so on, the driveway is part of his activity. Which is different, and somebody loading up some pipe on his truck to to go fix somebody's plumbing problem. So that that's where I'm struggling with it, and and I don't know, John, Paige, do you have any further thoughts on this?
I, oh, sorry, John. Because I may have misunderstood, but it sounds like the the actual repair work or the majority of it does occur. In the repair shop in his basement, and it's the draining of the fuels and the test running components that are occurring outside. I would think I am pretty comfortable with how. The trade shop definition is not this would need it, because I feel like the primary work, like the actual repair components, most of that is occurring in. Repair shop in his basement, it's really just the this. Minor, I shouldn't say minor, but this other incidental um activity that's occurring outside.
All right, John?
Paige, good, the the pieces I was thinking about was is a home on the premises may use the building of the home or or other building. But obviously, that's all on the premises, I was just saying, thinking what Wesley said, the premises are your home. So it looks like it might be covered.
Okay. So I I think we have a, I don't know if an agreement, but we tend to concur on that. And then we have uh following the the those, uh if you if, excuse me, I'm I'm muttering here. Julia, if you could put that other thing up again, the listing of the the. Criteria.
Sorry, I forgot I was on mute. Let me just find it again.
Yeah, those those six items. So you heard me talking a bit earlier, I'd like to have your feedback, board members, about those six items. Was I reasonable, did I miss something?
Can you guys still see that? So do we want to just go through those six items, or how do, how would you like to do this, and and how you're answering each of them?
Yeah, I think we need to have findings and on each one. And then after the finding, we would want to include. Cr- uh limiting criteria, if there are any.
Yeah, okay, so.
The social economic community needs which are served by the proposal on that one. Yeah, he's he's got a. He's he, he's got a trade job and folks are coming to him, so it must be a. Community need. Right, we tend to agree with that one. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. We heard some discussion about the driveway. So do we want to put? Criteria on that one?
I would prefer to, I I think this is something that's occurring already, but I think it'd be helpful to include it as a condition. Is that the pickups and the drop offs are by appointment only, um and are reservation only, and that. If there is a trailer that there, it needs to be directed to park or back up into the driveway and remain. Really on the uh applicant's property and not really extending into the roads so that it's blocking traffic flow.
That's that's a good catch, I like that. Adequacy of utilities and other public services. I I don't see an issue here. I think they're adequate because it's a it's a S one property and they're doing whatever they're doing in an S one, right? And so the next one, neighborhood character and social structures, I don't know what a social structure is. But the the neighborhood character is where I believe the fence comes in. Any other comments, we put the criteria that the fence or the gate, the the camouflage gate, or whatever you're gonna call it, works? You're you guys are on mute, so speak up, de-mute first.
The gate should be sufficient, in in my view, and. As the petitioner stated, that the volume of money he generates on an annual basis. Isn't that high, so if we were to request him putting a fence around his property, that would be exorbitant, I believe. So I think putting the gate in the. Basically shields the most part what we want shielded, I putting the gate is the best thing he can do right now.
He's he's not gonna be putting up a sign, so that's not gonna change the character of the neighborhood either.
Right, so we, that's a good catch, to say no sign. Uh impacts on the natural environment, well, thi- this is getting to the. The hazardous waste management, and he he commented he's gonna be putting a basin underneath it. For the basin to work, it probably should be protected from. Um the weather, so it doesn't get buried in snow and negate the impact of the collection if he has a a leak. So I think here. The impact would be he needs to follow the the DEP rules or the fire code rules, whichever one is the right one, to protect. His hazardous waste from being a problem, and I I don't know the technical way to phrase that, but that's.
Yeah, I think exactly what you're saying, I was just going to add, uh I think. By saying, you know, following the the local state and um local. And state guidelines around hazardous waste, uh storage and disposal.
Yes, that's good, I like your phraseology. Uh and then the last one here, fiscal impact, town services, tax base, employment. Well, the tax base, I I don't know if if he's recording this as a business, or if he's just doing it on the slide for, you know, town issues. He's shaking his head, no. So. Any comments from the board members on uh impact on town services, tax base, employment, whatever that is? Do you have to worry about that?
Yeah, I don't think that's a factor, it needs much discussing at all.
Good. All right, so we've gone through the the issues, and we considered all six of these items.
Paul, can I just add one thing before we move on? With that, with that last one, usually what what you guys have done in the past with special permits is just um requiring that the business be. Registered with the town.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for.
So, yeah, he he may have already done that, but we we put that in the in the special permit, just um. As a, at this point, it seems like. Every everyone, everyone that has to do with the business.
Thank you, I I was I was struggling with how to phrase that, because it doesn't happen to me that often.
Do we want to put um? A criteria that he um come back for review in a year, or?
That you you're right, Leslie, this is, this is an annual renewal. And so for him to continue operating nonstop, he would need to be back here before a year. So that it can be approved at the one year, before the one year event is up. So I you you can see, Justin, how many months this has taken to get you this far. Give us a few more weeks to get the document out, assuming we we vote for you here, and then to get the next year. You need to budget however many months that is ahead of time. So. I think we have covered it, I think the tone here is to grant the permit. But we need somebody to make that motion, and the easiest way to do that, since Julia's taken perfect notes, is to simply say, so moved. So who's gonna be that volunteer?
I'd be happy to say so moved, but don't ask me to go through all the details.
That's exactly why I said Julie has taken all these notes.
I will, unfortunately, uh I will have to just have you make a motion to to uh. Grant the permit with conditions as discussed.
There you go, she's so good.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, any further discussion? Hearing hearing none, um all those in favor? Raise hand or whatever.
If I'm voting tonight.
We see a whole bunch of hands up, so I think it was unanimous, I didn't hear.
Who seconded that one?
That was me, John.
Thank you.
So, Justin, I apologize, this took long, but frankly, this is one of the hardest. Special permits I had to go through because of all the different caveats we had to worry about. So I appreciate your patience on this.
Does he still need to hear from the fire chief? Is this like all pending on the fire chief?
The way um the fire chief did issue his comments, Leslie, um which are, but um what in the conditions it will say. You know, it's it's the applicant's responsibility to make sure he's consistent with the fire chief's local requirements, local and state requirements. And also, Justin, I've got to jump off of here, everybody, I'm sorry, I have to go to the FinCom meeting, um but. Julia, maybe you could just explain to Justin real quick that we're redoing this bylaw right now, so hopefully, and and then he can kind of. Add his, you know, he'd be, uh it'd do good for to have his input in here, um and have him. Provide some additional input for the.
As Bill heads to the sunset, the other thing I like to ask is, you know, either Bill or or Julia to.
I can explain it.
Describe the timeline of when what happens now for Justin.
Yeah, so Justin, basically, um, you'll probably will write your permit, um, most likely this week. Uh, we usually, when when it happens on a on a Monday, it's nice, because we have uh the rest of the week to work on this. Um, I will make the caveat that, um, as you may have seen, Bill is Bill is technically out right now. Um, he's having to work from home. Um, and I am at a conference this week, so goal is to get it by Friday, but I'll I'll let you know when that goes through. Um, and then there's a twenty day appeal period, so during that time, no work can be done, like right now, you shouldn't be doing any work um until you get that permit. Once that twenty days comes up, um, you will, we'll send you an email, you'll come in um to the clerk's office, and they'll hand you your your physical permit. And then that needs to get registered um at the Registry of Deeds. Um, so so I'll give you all those directions um when we get to that point, but once your twenty days is up and you have that permit in hand, um, and it's it's registered, you are you are good to go. That good enough, Paul? Did I miss anything?
No, no, that that's fine, just to give them the the I I clicked something here. I'm losing you, but anyway, yes, that's fine. So we have another motion that we need. I think we're all done with our agenda. Is that right?
That is correct.
There was something, there was something on there about the planning uh update on the agenda. Has anybody know anything about that?
Yeah, item four.
Hold on, I I didn't build the the agenda, so.
It just builds usual news at the end.
I think, yeah, you he just keeps those on there um as a placeholder, basically, for for any new updates. I mean, the biggest thing right now is, obviously, we encourage all of you to come to the planning board meeting, February fourteenth, Happy Valentine's Day, where we will continue to talk about um the zoning amendments um for uh home-based businesses, so um that will be, it's, we have a meeting tomorrow, but the the discussion was continued to February fourteenth. Uh, yeah, and then, you know, let me know if you if you have any other questions uh or concerns, and um.
So I got a question. I got a question for you, Julia.
Yes.
On this planning board discussion that you mentioned on the fourteenth, I assume that's in getting ready to put the home-based business in front of town meeting.
Correct, yeah, so they need to vote um to uh su- support the amendment going to town meeting.
Okay, and if that happens, and and if it goes to town meeting, and town meeting approves it.
Yep.
When does it become effective?
July first.
That that's when the new bylaws would be out, and this would be in there.
Correct. Yeah, so it gets approved in May, um, and then, but it's not effective until the fiscal year starts, the next fiscal year post the meeting, so.
The reason I'm asking this, Justin, is that this would, if if all gets approved the way it's described, your next special permit renewal thing, which would be next spring, the end of the year, first part of the next of twenty four.
Yes.
Would be by the new rules. Right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll send, um, we have, you know, uh, not many, a few uh special permit holders right now. Um, so we will definitely get in contact with them as soon as town meeting. Um, you know, if those, if everything goes through, um, and kind of start working with with them, but also, you know, kind of talk with you guys on how we want to start approaching, you know, the ones that are coming up for annual renewal and how we get them their new permits. Um, that's gonna be, I think, the hardest ones, is these ones in transition, uh, where they have a permit, and now they're trying to get.
Okay.
So we'll we'll continue to work on that.
Great. So with that being said, I think we're done with all the the listed items. So I need another motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Great, do I get a second?
Second.
Great. All in favor? Yay.
Aye.
So, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Good luck, Justin.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Yep.
Okay, bye.
Bye bye.